We'll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, July 18th, 2018 at 7:30 PM. Mrs. Arrington, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatkowski is absent, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes from the council meeting of Wednesday, June 20th, 2018, and bills for payment on July 6, 13th, and 20th, 2018, Ms. Allen, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington.
That takes us to repository sales. Are there anybody, is there anyone here for repository sales? Is there anyone here for repository sales? Last call for repository sales. That takes us into citizens to be heard.
Good evening. Jason Burnell, 4131 McCollin Avenue, Erie PA 16510. And Rose, I do have some stuff to hand out tonight.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, Erie City Council, Shemper Administration, fellow citizens. First and foremost, I'd like to say thank you to the city of Erie. 1,500 warriors of love came to Erie pride. That is remarkable. Thank you for all the wonderful, inclusive, and amazing work the city of Erie did this year for pride. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, what I'm handing out to you is the gay conversion therapy ban update. The Bradley Sullivan LGBT Community Center of Allentown, Pennsylvania applauds Bethlehem City Council for unanimously passing the ordinance out of committee and for the first vote. This happened a couple of months ago. Couple of months ago. July 17th, 2018, the city of Bethlehem City Council unanimously finally voted to ban gay conversion therapy in the city of Bethlehem last night, marking them the seventh municipality in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to ban gay conversion therapy. The National Education Association, the Pennsylvania State Education Association, had a gathering this past month, I do believe. This new business item 121 was adopted by our delegation of 8,000 members. It was nearly unanimous. But our educators in the city of Erie and across the Commonwealth and across the nation support banning gay conversion therapy across the board. What does that say? What does that say about the educators, our parents, and those that will love to have their child be free to love who they would like to love, free to be themselves and grow and educate themselves in a community where they will be respected, they will feel safe, and they will feel that they can thrive? The reason why I'm talking about Bethlehem is because I was watching them this year. They took what I gave you, Erie City Council and the Shemper Administration, with the documents from the city of Reading. The city of Reading was the fifth to ban it. The city of Reading is a smaller community than Erie. Bethlehem is smaller than Erie. Doylestown is smaller than Erie. State College is definitely smaller than Erie. We just had the best pride ever. And I'd just like to applaud Mayor Shemper on his new LGBT Advisory Council. Thank you for putting that together. And I know those 31 members would agree with me when I say this. It's time to pass gay conversion therapy ban in the city of Erie now. Our time is now. Our time is now to ban it. Our time now is to make sure that, moving forward, we can have bigger, better opportunities for the LGBT youth to be themselves. They won't have to walk down State Street worrying about being discriminated. They won't have to go to church and worry about their faith. Because I'm going to tell you, this is the last thing I'm going to say. Luke, Chapter 6, verse 31, is what I, as a citizen, I as a leader, I as an ambassador, I as somebody who lives in the city of Erie believe in. The golden rule, "Do unto others as you went done to yourself." Thank you, Erie City Council, and enjoy the weekend.
Hello. My name is Neil Woods. I live at 716 Sassafras. Recent trends and market surveys have indicated that corporations and their workers are migrating back into cities. In cities across their countries. Two publications in particular point that fact out Forbes and Professional Builder. Now, we certainly have proof of that on a local level, as evidenced by the expansions by Erie Insurance, UPMC, and St. Vincent's. Additionally, new orders have guaranteed continued employment at General Electric. That will also strengthen opportunities for smaller manufacturers and employment throughout our area. Economics and market trends, along with existing amenities, which we have plenty of in the area, pretty much drive that flow into our area. It really is organic. Tax abatement programs like LERTA, along with other state and federally funded programs, may spur some growth, but if an area is desirable, like we all know Erie is, those programs do nothing more than fatten the wallets of some developers and corporations. We must also consider that nonprofits in our area are continuing to remove property from the tax rolls. Programs like LERTA would increase the strain on poorer property owners who would have to pick up the slack. As an example, Gannon just purchased for a half million dollars a piece of property on Eighth and Sassafras. And that's coming off the tax rolls. Who's going to cover what that property paid into the system? What is the school district going to do in that regard? As it is begging for donations on Erie Gives Day to fund some of their programs, a fleet of SUVs in lieu of taxes isn't going to help a fourth grader get a math book to take home to study. With all that said, a LERTA program without a CBA agreement attached is nothing more than a politician rewarding his wealthy supporters and contributors. Average homeowners and the school district are left holding the bag. One other thing. A big deal was made of a well-publicized housing project groundbreaking on Peach Street between 13th and 14th Street. That was almost a year ago. I'm wondering out loud, is the developer just waiting for you folks to reward him for his support? Thank you.
Yes, I'm short. Good evening, council president, council members, representatives in the mayor's office. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I appreciate it. For those of you who don't know, my name is Diana Ames. I work at the Mental Health Association. We seem to be having quite a problem with folks that stand on street corners, excuse me, making obscene gestures, smoking things other than tobacco, being drunk, walking in the middle of the streets, and generally being obnoxious in any way possible. Yeah, I guess they do have their nerve. And why is this happening? Why are they not trying to get a job, find a place to live? Basically because they're homeless. These are folks that I work with every day, and I've gotten to know many of them. And believe me, being homeless is not my choice. And actually, I know that from experience, because as some of you know, my husband and I were, excuse me, were homeless in the 80s. We had the kids in the car, we had the dog, and it was a really dumb reason. The unemployment ran out in my husband's case. The, excuse me, the extended benefits were not available through the federal government because the poverty rate wasn't, the unemployment rate wasn't high enough in the city. And the job that I had, we literally went to work one day and found that the doors were locked and the furniture was gone and nobody was there. We were the only ones there, and we were outside and the place was locked. So, it created a problem for us. I will say that even though we ended up living in the car, we did recover, like a lot of folks do. But the problem is we've had a lot of companies that have left. As you know, Riley Stoker's gone, GAF is gone, GE is struggling, American Sterilizer is history, A.O. Smith, Hammer Mill, and that creates a problem. That means that the unemployment rate is high, and that means individuals are struggling. Many of these unemployed folks are members of the Mental Health Association. To become a member, as some of you know, you do need to have a diagnosis. They make me something very simple like anxiety, which will get you in the door. Once there, there are services that we provide, things that we offer. A lot of times, that makes a difference. But I will tell you very honestly, as I'm the community engagement coordinator, the one thing that I do, the first thing I do is work with them to find housing. The difference between these folks, once they get housing and then they move forward trying to find unemployment or go back to school, is amazing. And I think this is really important. I think we need to look at opportunities within the community. A couple of years ago, I was working with, I found something on the internet regarding Albuquerque, New Mexico, and how they came back from a high rate of poverty. And some of you, I think, might be aware of that. And I ended up talking to the mayor at Albuquerque several times, excuse me, and he told me that one of the things that they did, they got a group of individuals together. They reached out to areas like the Mental Health Association. They got a group of folks together. They took them out every day. Sometimes they swept the streets in the city. Sometimes they went out into, excuse me, the county, and they did things out there. Every day, they paid them a daily wage. They fed them supper, and social workers worked with them to see what they wanted. They asked them what they wanted and how they thought they were going to get it. Because of that, they saw a reduction, a significant reduction in poverty. It might be something that we might want to consider. We do have a lot of services here in the city and in the county, as you know. I think what might be much more effective, if, I would like to invite city council to come to the Mental Health Association. Wednesday is usually the best day. We have hospitality in the morning, and if you folks would be able to come, I would really appreciate that. Talk to my members and have them tell you what they want. And maybe between the members, who, by the way, are voters. Yes, I make them vote. Yes, I do. But if we could talk, if we could talk and the members could talk to you, we might be able to come up with something to reduce this poverty rate in the community. I think it's something that we might really want to consider. One of the things that, I sit on the Erie United Methodist Alliance Board, which is a group of United Methodist churches, and that's one of the things that we're trying to do. We're trying to work with the individuals that are in the shelters, Hope House, The Refuge, Liberty House. We're trying to work with them, and they're telling us what they want, and we're trying to make that happen. If you can give folks that have a need, address their needs, it really is amazing, the difference in them. A lot of the folks that I work with now, they're employed, they're out there doing what they need to do. A lot of them volunteer, and that is really great. And I think it's an opportunity that we might want to take advantage of. I think if you are able to do that, I have my business cards, if you wouldn't mind. I have business cards. If you folks would be willing to contact me and come on out and see what we do and how we do it, I would greatly appreciate that. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
My name's Freda Tepfer. I live at 1738 West 23rd Street in Erie. I want to mention that I'm here and a bunch of people are here because I get the agendas on Friday, and I saw the Quality of Life Ordinance was on the agenda, and this, the agenda's not posted till Monday on the website. It's available on Friday. It should be posted on the website on Friday. I got a copy of the Quality of Life Ordinance officially through the clerk's office, and then I shared it with other people. I should not have had to do that. It should be posted on the website. That's a significant thing, and it should be available to the citizens. They shouldn't have to go asking for it when time is of the essence. And I understand that you've decided to table that ordinance until after the study session. I think that's a great idea. I'm going to make some comments about it because I probably won't be here. I hope that you make quite sure that if you are going to table and you do have a study session, that it's easy for people to find out about those study sessions. Generally, they're not very well advertised. And I would also like to mention that several times, I have come here after hours when there are meetings scheduled and the door was locked. So you need to make sure that door is not locked. For four years, you've been working on the Alternative Lawn Ordinance. And it is not fair to those of us who have staked in that and who put time into it to go ahead and talk about ticketing people for 10-inch-high grass when some of us are growing native grasses, when you have let the Alternative Lawn Ordinance just fall into a black hole, which I know Kathy is working very hard to pull it out of. I am concerned that you have things in here that talk about blocking sidewalks, snow removal. I would like to see you prioritize the commercial street snow removal and the commercial street blockage of sidewalk. I can't tell you how many times I have complained about the failure to have the sidewalks cleared on Green Garden between 12th and 21st to no avail. I would like to see quality of life for my neighbors trying to walk to the bus, on the number 30 bus on Green Garden and 16th, to have that opportunity and not see people walking in the street in the wintertime, when that's a very busy street and it's dangerous. I was disgusted to hear John Steiner, who does not work for the city, at the taxpayers' hotline say, "Well, 12th Street, we don't need to plow 12th Street the sidewalks because that's an industrial neighborhood and people don't need to walk there. There are no cleared sidewalks all winter long from Sassafras to I-79." And that is quality of life. 38th Street, all kinds of places, businesses that block their driveways. I'd like to see that addressed as quality of life. Now, I'm going to change the subject and just talk about some of the things I've seen in the paper and read that relate directly to the viaduct. I'm very happy that there's a new bridge or revamped bridge on Norman Way and that the mayor and Bob Casey got to look at it. But this bridge doesn't really service very many people. But the viaduct, hundreds of people use the viaduct all week long, and that's their safe, clean way to get somewhere. What about them? The mayor, in an article about the Erie Lightway Project, said, "The city is behind it. I'm going to look for money." And that's not an exact quote, but it's accurate to what he said. This has not been vetted. This has not been examined. But he's going to find the money. It's going to be expensive, but we're going to find the money. Why can't we find the money for people who really need a way to get somewhere? The DEP talked about the pollution in the city, the particulate pollution and the ozone, and that there's no safe levels. Yet, we're going to force people to walk along the Bayfront Connector, and that was never analyzed. The impact of pollution and noise on those people who were forced to walk there was never analyzed as part of the study. This is an illegal process. It's not consistent with NEPA, and it's still not right.
Art Leopold, 5341 Apple Grove Lane, Erie PA 16506. Honored mayor, honored councilmen and ladies, I have some thanks to pass out this evening. First of all, we had a wonderful AmeriMasala Festival this weekend. I want to thank in particular Kathy Schaff, Dave Rocco, and the mayor's office for helping make things happen for us. We had a grand time. It was an amazing, wonderful event, and we hope that in future years, many more people can take advantage. But it was a wonderful deal. I also want to thank the mayor and the administration for the new advisory board, the LGBTQ Advisory Board. About time. One of the things you've noticed about the mayor, I think it's lifted everyone in the city to acknowledge the diversity that we have and the various types, stages, religions, peoples in this city, in this community, and to celebrate everyone. And I think that's a wonderful thing, and it's a beginning, but it's an important beginning. I also want to talk about the LERTA that has been discussed for some time. I've spoken before the county council. I've been before the school board talking about LERTA. I've been before this August buddy talking about LERTA and about the ads or the enhancements that Erie County United has suggested. We also would like to see, to make it really effective, to add some CBA language, Community Benefits Agreement language to it. We think that's essential to really make it something that's viable. There are a lot of businesses, a lot of developers that are ongoing and that are contemplating development, that already have a lot of different tax breaks, $5 million here, $8 million there, et cetera. I think it's something that would be valuable, but not without considering paying jobs and working people that need to have work in the city. It's one of Mayor Joe's particular issues is jobs. But jobs that don't pay well are not going to lift us up. We have those, and we've had those for 30, 40 years. It's really, it's really time to have, to put some thought into this and really have some good-paying jobs that come along with the development. And of course, I'm not going to leave without talking about the viaduct. I think the bridge is an important piece of the east side. We're going to go talk to 9,000 households, and I applaud you for that, about what they want to see as far as development. Having a bridge over there is important, having the transportation, being able to move from north to south. The pedestrian transportation facility is really important. And of course, what we want to have is a public hearing. Thank you very much.
Hello, Kate Kaylee, 1146 West 23rd. So, I was just thinking about what Diana Ames said about Albuquerque, and I think that that's an excellent example of how we can use LERTA to hold developers to be responsible and socially conscious of our community. I think that CBA language in the LERTA could help when we have aggressive panhandling. Instead of, you know, demonizing or criminalizing poverty, I think we can use this thing so we have more job creation, that people can make wages that they don't need to have two or three jobs. So they can make wages so they, you know, feel comfortable and have a good quality of life. I don't see that it would make things much more complicated if we put some of that language in there. I think a lot of that language is already in there. I would just like to see those percentages, you know, for local hire and job opportunities go to locals. The housing stuff, you know, if Erie Insurance is going to be building housing for their employers or employees, then I think that an equal amount of affordable housing could be created at the same time. Just, all we're asking for is socially conscious development. We don't want to take away LERTA from homeowners or private citizens, but I definitely think that Erie needs a return on our investment in all this development and through our tax money. And I don't see, we can work together to make that happen. We've given you suggestions on how to do this. If that's not going to be something that's possible, I would love to see an entirely separate ordinance to attach CBAs to tax incentive that we give out to corporations. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, city council, solicitor. I wanted to touch on a couple of things tonight. One is the, there's so much to cheer about. Oh, Adam Trot, 531 West 6th Street, second floor. Thanks. There's so much to cheer about, and it's befuddling to see things being done so well in one place and things being so callously dismissed in another. I think we can be more equitable than that. Specifically, again, the viaduct. There's been so many falsehoods put out from City Hall, and the newspaper's been a little bit complicit in it. To this day, just the other day, when the newspaper ran the article about the filings that were done on Friday by PUC and PennDOT, they again incorrectly said the viaduct is part of the $7.5 million Buffalo Road intersection project. It has never been part of that. Never. It's not even owned by the same entity. Viaduct is north-south. Buffalo Road is east-west. That distortion of the public narrative continues to be promulgated by both City Hall and Erie Times, and it is dreadfully incorrect. So, we need to stop doing that and sticking to facts, which is what we've asked for for now five years. I want to ask that you please go look at what that place looks like at night. I sent pictures in an email, the city council and the mayor. It is horrible to expect the residents on that side of town to go from north-south or south-north by using either the Bayfront Connector or the viaduct right now. All we need to do is turn the lights on at the viaduct, and you have a much more humane path. And by leaving them off, I will reiterate, that's breaking the promise that you would leave that a functional path. Everybody on second and third shift uses that pathway. Now, it's been made a lot worse because the sidewalk, of course, on 12th Street is completely gone, and it's a construction site, and we don't object to that. What we object to is that there's no compensatory measure being provided for removing that. The Bayfront Parkway has those traffic signs put on, and I would think that with all the engineers involved, we could come up with a better signage method than engineers involved, we could come up with a better signage method than one that takes away a nine-and-a-half-foot pathway and reduces it to four feet. It's just a nightmarish situation for the people that use that. And like I said in the email, I was there for five minutes photographing, no one used the bayfront, but three people, two walkers and one bicycle, used the viaduct, even though it's pitch black. So please, look at that and get Swank to make better accommodations for our residents. Now, we all know capacity at City Hall is limited, and there's a lot of great things being done here. But what we're asking about regarding the viaduct does not affect your capacity, it simply stops you from doing tremendous harm to that side of town. That's what we're asking for. And we're asking for the public hearing so we can dismiss all the crazy, nonsensical things that have been said about this issue, and only the facts dictate what the public narrative is. And there are so many examples of how this public narrative continues to be distorted. And in some cases, I'm sure it's overlooked items, but in some cases, it looks very intentional. There was a wonderful article about Langdon's visit, but that article was noticeably devoid of any mention about Langdon's keynote talk, which included a significant discussion about the viaduct. As a matter of fact, it was so lacking, Langdon wrote an op-ed to the Erie Times to clarify that he thinks the viaduct should be saved. Those kinds of things are obviously not just an overlooked item, they're intentional to distort the public narrative. And frankly, that's just unacceptable. We should be better than that. Everybody here at City Hall works hard, they do great work. We can't go and handicap all that great work by doing something so callous. And finally, I hope to see you all at the Lake Erie Cycle Fest, August 2nd through the 5th. It promises to be a wonderful event, God willing, with good weather. Thank you.
Hello, my name is ZJ Fike. I reside in 900 block of West 25th Street. I'm here to speak to you in support on community benefit agreements for the city. I believe that it could help our city with a lot of the things, the income inequality, the inequality with the minorities in the city, and other things. We just gave, I believe, $5 million to a local company to invest down on the bayfront with no guarantees of living wages, a company that I worked for for about seven years, and I can tell does not pay their employees' living wages. So I believe that community benefit agreements could help address things like that. I'm also here to ask City Council to consider passing a resolution proclaiming September 25th voter registration day is already recognized nationally. I've spoken to county council, and they seem to be on board with it as well. I've already had the Erie School District agree to do it. They're gonna be hosting voter registration day in Erie High and Collegiate Academy. I've spoke to the dean of prep. I'm waiting on a call back from him, but he said it seems like it's something that they'd want to do. I'm also working with the local colleges in the area as well. So from City Council, I would just ask that you proclaim this and with your new social media liaison, kind of promote this throughout social media to try to get the vote out as much as possible. We obviously saw the low turnout this past election in April, and I would hate for that to happen again. Whether it's Republicans or Democrats, you need to get as many people out as possible. I think that you folks could help us do that. I believe that if we proclaim this and every year promote this, that it could energize our youth and, you know, future potential voters. So that's all I have, and thank you for all the work that you've been doing.
Martha Wachuku, 711 Myrtle Street, apartment 2. I'm here to speak on behalf of the community benefit agreements being proposed by Erie County United. Last night, our mother organization, Pittsburgh United, along with hundreds of folks, showed up at Pittsburgh's City Council, and the city council slowed it down UPMC's efforts to expand at their Mercy Hospital property until they agreed to attach a community benefit agreement to that project. So it's being done all across this country, it's being done right here in our own region to make sure that communities are not negatively impacted by development. No one's trying to stop development, we're just asking for socially conscious and more inclusionary efforts in these expansions. So I want to speak in support of that and hoping that the council and the mayor's administration considers, again, community benefit agreements. And regarding the panhandling, I want to say that in relation to what Diana Ames said, rather than trying to penalize these people, we should explore efforts that would, whether it give them housing or job opportunities, like cleaning up downtown, looking for ways to get those people to be more productive and/or house them, to keep them off the streets rather than putting them in jail cells and/or fining them. I'd like to hear more about that, actually, from the council, what your thoughts are in that effort. So, thank you for your time.
My name is Doris Apola, 8640 East Lake Road. I've been here before, obviously, on behalf of the McBride Bridge, and I am here again for that. It really saddens me to think of all the things that are being done in Erie, and that somehow there's a potential of this becoming a dead end. The only way you can revitalize the side, I feel, one of the ways, would be to do something with the McBride Bridge as far as making it a pedestrian walkway and for cyclists. It's the only safe way, both from the standpoint of preventing vehicular accidents and, of course, impacting people's health. But I see it more than that. I see it as a place that could become a really vital part of some kind of development. If you go to about 11th Street and you look up, the bridge is really not that unesthetic. Everything around it is unesthetic, in a sense. But the bridge itself could really become an oasis, a place for art, a place for people to walk, a place for, you have concerts down here at the bayfront, to have a concert there, to revitalize East Avenue restaurants, ethnic restaurants particularly would be great, boutiques, maybe a bakery. It could be a way of bringing this back to life rather than making it a dead end. These people need this. We're talking about community benefits. Obviously, this is in relation to taxes, and those types of benefits have to be considered. If we're gonna be socially conscious and deal with social justice, we have to give to those who labor. There is no capital without labor, and that has to be recognized, and people should be Because then, everything is left to the homeowners. Now, I was saddened tonight to hear about the panhandling. I didn't know it. I mean, how could you think of being punitive to people who need a hand up? It just boggles my mind that anyone would think like that. So I'm hoping that you will open your eyes to see something bright for the future of the east side, for the McBride Bridge. I hope you'll do something with LERTA and make sure that there are definite community benefits. And I hope you're not gonna do anything to make life more difficult for people who find it necessary to panhandle to begin with. Thank you. One other thing, I do want to thank Mayor Shember for what he did to the LGBT community in welcoming us, and I want to apologize to everyone in Erie for the LGBT community, many of us not aware that there was gonna be an adult show in the middle of the afternoon with families. And I'm very sorry that happened, and I hope that in the future, it will never happen again. Thank you.
Good evening. Darlene Henderson, 924 East 21st Street. I've lived in Erie approximately 20 years on the east side of town, and I've never seen the administration of the city address the concerns of the east side of town. I see them come when there's violence, I see them come to the schools when little children are being disruptive, but I don't see them in a concerning way. There's a side, the side of town, it's like a stepchild. And if you're gonna be the mayor of the city, be the mayor of the city. That includes Glenwood, Frontier, Lower East Side, Lower West Side, all of it. The viaduct is important to the east side of town. There was an article in a newspaper where one of the mayor's advisors said that he wouldn't want to live on that side of town with those people. He should, because it's a caring group of people. When we lose a family member, we support each other, we help each other do house repairs, we come together as family. He probably wouldn't fit in, you come to think about it. But if you're gonna be the mayor of a city, and I've come from a big city, so I know it can be done, if you want to do it. There's a way of getting the LERTA passed with CBAs that's not rocket science, but you gotta want to do it. You gotta want to take care of your children. They're not our future, they're here today, and a lot of them have thoughts and insights that you need to listen to. You're gonna knock on 9,000 doors, mine hasn't been hit yet. Come see what we need. Come walk through there. How you have a city, and at 7:00 all the lights in the city go off. You know you have uneven sidewalks, so you have single mothers, and some of them aren't single, trying to push strollers on uneven sidewalks. And then you have police officers giving them tickets for pushing the strollers in the street, but they can't push them on the sidewalk. You gotta, we gotta do better than that. And it shouldn't have to come from the homeowner's pocket to fix sidewalks. There's a way of doing that, too. Go talk to the larger cities where all that is being done. Boston, Chicago, Los Angeles, there's examples that you can use. It may be bigger, much bigger than yours, but they've done it, and it can be done. Talk to those people. There's a lot that is here, there's a lot here. There's a lot of people here that have a lot of experience. Their hands get tied because you don't know you and you don't know you. Forget all that. If it's really about your city, pull the people together, all the people, from all the neighborhoods. What you do for the west side, you should be able to do for the east side. If you can fix a little bridge, you can fix a big bridge. There's no difference, except that you don't want to do it.
Michael Keyes, 3612 Reed Street. First, I'd like to say I am a supporter about the bridge, but I don't want to waste our time on that today. I'm a supporter of LERTA, I mean, I'm not a supporter of LERTA, nor am I a supporter of Community Benefits Agreement. If you look at the amount of money that is, why would I allow you to take upwards of $15 million out of my budget and then ask you to give me something back? What we want is no LERTA expansion, and we want CBAs. Because we want the money that's already supposed to be ours. A CBA, a Community Benefit Agreement, is supposed to be over and above the benefits that we already have. Those tax dollars are due the citizens of Erie in Erie County. And with this, that being said, you know, I was energized by, you know, the City of Hope and the hopeful campaign, and then I came across the, what is being said is the Quality of Life Ordinance. And it's 22 pages, we can't go through it all here, but it's really, I feel it's an attack on some people's way of life. You know, when you have a community standard, it's different on Third and German than it is on 41st Street or on West 26th Street. Every area is different. They have their own things that they do differently, things that they like, things that they dislike, and I don't think it's for the administration to decide whether these things are acceptable. And a lot of things in here are making it harder for small businesses, like I cannot park my commercial vehicle on the street. If I'm a small business and I live in the inner city where there's no off-street parking and I don't have a garage, where do you suggest I put my vehicles? And I know some of these things are common sense, but you have to think of them, when they're put in writing, how they can be enforced. The one about the ownership and presumption of waste, it says, "It shall be unlawful for any person, business, or partnership entity to remove, haul, waste, or trash, or receptacles without the approval of a license. Any waste or trash found not disposed in accordance with law, be in violation of that part." And then, so there's a lot of small businesses, I don't know what the proper permitting is, but there's a lot of people who take away people's sofas and things for a certain amount of money, and that would be pretty much making all these businesses illegal. And then we're talks about, and also theoretically speaking, this ordinance would also make it illegal for you to remove recyclables. So the people we see on our bridge that are hauling waste, that are not properly licensed for it, theoretically speaking, the people who scavenge through the trash to get metal so that they can get money so that they can live, will now be illegal. Placement of outside furniture, perfect example. I think one of the council people were telling me a story about that today, where they walked up to a house and, you know, people were sitting on the front porch in their regular sofa, it's covered, so I guess it doesn't get rained on. But that's what they do in certain places. And I don't think it's right for, just because they don't do it where I live, doesn't mean that it's not okay. It should be regulated for how they are supposed to amuse themselves and enjoy the outdoors in their own environment. One, having your trash receptacle removed before daybreak. You know, who gets up at 5:00 in the morning and puts their trash away? I'm just asking.
Lisa Austin, 1262 West 9th. Good evening, elected leaders. I have six points in five minutes, so I'll go kind of quick. City Council is elected at large. There is no one actually representing the area around the viaduct, no one living in those neighborhoods where 40% of the people rely on walking or biking to get around. I think it's time to look into starting to elect City Council in future by ward or district or some combination so that the entire city gets representation. Secondly, I'm in very much support of the Community Benefits Agreement. We've been talking about this for a couple of years now, especially tied in with the viaduct. Thirdly, the LERTA on the waterfront, it's confused- Thirdly, the LERTA on the waterfront, it's confusing to me why we think we need to give temp people to develop this amazing benefit feature that we have. I'm really against it, especially with the critical moment that we are with the funding for our schools, we cannot afford to give up 10 years of taxes. Number four, the Light Waste Project, I think it's basically a really exciting idea. I'm very interested in this idea that the money can be found so quickly for it, or that there's enthusiasm to do it. Again, it hasn't been vetted by the community, and I'm very interested in making sure, as a public artist myself, that the artist proposals follow a, a proper vetting process. Fifth, the Quality of Life, I'm very grateful to the Madam President and her colleagues for withdrawing that from the agenda today, but I want to piggyback on what Mr. Keyes has commented on. There are a number of issues that do need to be addressed. The littering, number seven, would indicate that if you put flyers on somebody's door and they flew off, you would bend up having to pay $25 per flyer that flew away, that's a real problem when you're trying to get information out. Again, he mentioned the furniture, the snow and ice, it's not possible for many of the residents to care for those things. We have a lot of elderly people, it's physically, we're not possible to remove the snow themselves. We have to make some other alternative arrangements. The idea of having licensing, of licensed people within the city, I know that the cost to use licensed, say plumbers for instance, runs about 25% higher than the cost of that comparable service in the county. That's a real issue, especially when you're trying to improve your property. Number 30 indicates you must have smoke detectors, even in private homes. I'm wondering how that's going to be evaluated? Are you expecting the inspectors to inspect our homes, our private homes? Number three, the sidewalk has already been mentioned. The, previously, in the pre-meeting, there was a comment about this quality of life actually is less costly to the offender, and in reality, the cost is $25 per offense. And then, if it's not taken care of within two days, according to the document I read, it would raise to $100 a day per offense. In addition, if the city had to take care of it, it would cost $75 per hour, plus it would cost the, the materials, plus there would be a 25% kind of add-on fee. And so, all of those may be very, very costly, and may serve actually to push people out of neighborhoods. That brings me, of course, to my favorite topic, the viaduct. And I want to point out that now we have six national experts, including Philip Langdon, who have come out in favor of saving this bridge. We have no national expert saying that we should tear it down. I want to comment that the New York Times article, which I hope all of you have read, has been dismissed by members of this body and also the Erie Times News as being written by somebody who parachuted in, who wrote the story before he got here. This is an amazing statement to make by, about somebody who has been nominated for the Pulitzer Prize. It really makes Erie look like a bit of a Hicksville. This article is worth really taking another look at, it is not to be dismissed. And I want to say that, I believe that the administration has been pushing the demolition, not because of any lack of concern necessarily about the east side, but because of bad advice. Bad advice from the city engineer, who has been stated that for 10 years, he's been planning the demolition. This is prior to any study to decide what to do with the bridge. I think this is probably a legal issue. I also think it's interesting that the bridge itself, again, has been harmed by his actions of failing to clean the storm drains. That's the, and then lastly, I invite you to reread what his second advisor said, Mr. Wazork, who said that there, he cannot find the type of housing with neighbors he would want to live with on the east side, we need to prepare people to move out of those neighborhoods. That's the mayor's advisor, and it's frightening to me that this has not been challenged in a more public way. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cole Shenley, I live at 2621 Jackson Avenue. I'm just here to speak on behalf of the CBA agreements that everyone else has kind of been talking about tonight, and imploring you to look into them and consider them for our community. There's an article at publicsource.org about what went on in Pittsburgh in the last few days, Monday night, last night, whatnot, for their 200, 2 billion expansion plan that UPMC is pushing through, and that the city council has decided that they will not approve and not go through with unless there's a CBA agreement as a part of that. You know, I really think you should look into this. You know, a CBA agreement, like in Pittsburgh, what they're asking for is, you know, when the, these kind of developments happen, there'd be a grocery store, parks, you know, jobs, local employment, employment for the black community, for people, new Americans and whatnot, looking into like building up our, you know, these, that city in Pittsburgh. You know, they're our, basically one of our cousins. We should really look into that, and I really hope that you would consider this. Look at this article on publicsource.org. Pittsburgh's a huge city, and if the city council there is willing to stand up and say to UPMC, one, obviously one of the biggest employers in the region, and say, "No, we're not going to go through with your expansion plans unless there's a CBA," I think you should look, you know, consider that, and, you know, have the courage to represent for these people that elected you. And, yeah, you know, that's why you're here, to stand up for us, and we're just asking, you know, to be able to, you know, have something, be given something back. So, thank you for your time.
Are there any more citizens to be heard? Are there any more citizens to be heard? Last call for citizens to be heard. That takes us to ordinance for final passage.
Council File 15636, official ordinance number 262018. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $500,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof for the construction phase of City of Erie Milling and asphalt resurfacing, federal aid local routes, PANDO transportation alternatives program grant agreement. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Ms. Schoff, the council file ordinance number 15636, and now known as official file ordinance number 262018, be finally passed by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City council pass official file ordinance number 262018, finally by ye six, nay zero. Council File 15637, official ordinance number 272018. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $133,329 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof, 2018 insurance fraud prevention authority. By Mr. Winarsky, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, that council file ordinance bill number 15637, and now known as official file ordinance number 272018, be finally passed by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City council pass official file ordinance number 272018, finally by ye six, nay zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council File number 15638, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $42,072 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof, 2017 justice assistance grant. By Mr. Winarsky, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, the council file ordinance number 15638, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 15638 by ye six, nay zero, on Council Files 15639 for the Quality of Life Ticketing Program has been pulled by city council pending further discussion and information. That will take us to the new basis.
Madam President?
Yes.
Vote to move the balance of the agenda, please.
I'll second, and I do have one that I would like to separate. Number 11 under new business.
Is that the only one?
There? There any more separation?
Yes, I'd like to separate number one.
Okay, moving the balance of the agenda, Ms. Allen, Mr. Petowski, whoops, sorry, he's absent. Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington.
Discussion.
First, you're up, Rose.
Thank you. Okay, resolution number one. By Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mrs. Schoff, resolved by the council of the City of Erie, that Erie City Council respectfully requests that the city solicitors prepare an ordinance specifically focused on panhandling, begging, and solicitation, and to provide penalty provisions thereof. Discussion.
Madam President?
Yes.
As the maker of the motion, I just wanted to explain to the community some of the rationale behind this, and, and where it goes from here if this passes. This came about as I was working with constituents at Tulio Towers, and many of them are on fixed incomes and have disabilities, and they were saying how they feel afraid to leave their building because they're being followed to the bank, they're being followed to Dollar General, and they're being solicited for money. And in particular, one of the ladies had, is in a wheelchair, and she said, "Bob, all he has to do is push my wheelchair over and take my purse." And she said, "I, I'm at the ATM on State Street, and he's standing right there waiting for me to take out the money, to ask for money." In a society, the social contract is that we do have an obligation to help people. But also part of that social contract is that you have the expectation of safety, and part of, we have to find that balance. And so, the purpose of this is to let the administration look at what would work for Erie, and in doing this, so I, I looked at the, listened to the people from downtown, the residents. Then I spoke with members of the business community from downtown. They all addressed it as an issue. People from Erie Insurance, executives from the banks, restaurant owners in Erie, and bar owners in downtown, they've all unanimously addressed this as a concern. And then I look at our comprehensive plan, and on page 28, it says, "For our downtown, that predictability and safety or an absence of disorder is part of that downtown high quality, quality of life, residential quality of life." If we're gonna get people to move into our downtown, and work in our downtown, and live in our downtown, we have to make sure that it's safe for them, and, and it's not that they're unsafe, but that they feel safe, and that they're not being harassed. So the purpose of this isn't to punish the person who asks you for a dollar, but it's to set the expectations for this community that it's not okay when the person tells you no, or after they give you the dollar, to then follow them around to where they're going and ask for more, or not take no for an answer, and then harass, cajole, intimidate them. And because that's what people are feeling right now, as I listen to people who live downtown, and these people are on fixed incomes, it's not like, these are multimillionaires, these are people on fixed incomes that are on disability, who are being harassed. So, I don't want to make this a class thing, and I don't want to make it a race thing, because it's not. It's about, what are the expectations of a civil society? And in a civil society, the expectation is that you can walk in your downtown and feel safe and not be harassed. And so, I just bring it up. The other thing, too, is, you know, it's right on our front page of our website. We want to have a community of choice, Erie a community of choice, and have a world-class downtown. So we're gonna have to make some difficult decisions along the way to go, to get to that, and so that's the rationale behind this. Now, this is just a resolution. It starts the conversation, and it's a conversation that's difficult, but it's a conversation that we need to have in this community. People need to feel safe coming downtown, and it's been addressed by the residents, it's been addressed by the business community, and it's been addressed by our visitors, that they've all experienced this aggressive panhandling. So this isn't about just somebody asking for a dollar, this is about being followed to your car, this is about not taking no for an answer. That's, that was the intent behind this resolution, to get the ball rolling, to start the conversation. Thank you.
Madam President, first, I want to thank my colleague, Bob Mersky, for taking the initiative to try to come up with a solution to address the problem of panhandling in Erie. I'm no stranger to this issue. My first experience happened when I was in college at Marquette University, when I was approached on a regular basis by a man outside the journalism school, who always used to ask me for 17 cents, perhaps because you could get a beer in Milwaukee for 15 cents at the time, and I'm, I'm not sure what he did with the extra two cents. So my friends started calling him the 17-cent bum. In later years, I realized that inflation had greatly upped the request of panhandlers when a young, well-dressed couple approached me at the last Oasis rest stop on the tri-state tollway in Illinois, just before the Wisconsin border, and told me a sob story about how they needed $17 to repair their car. I gave them $20, and I didn't get any change, or, or a thank you even. So, I, I mean, I've had a lot of experiences with this type of approach. In fact, just about two weeks ago, at a store where I work a few hours a week, a woman walked in and asked if we had any odd jobs, because she needed to earn $42 to take the bus to Dayton, Ohio with her daughter. She started telling the same hard-luck story to customers, so the owner firmly asked her to leave, and she did without any hassle. Then she started going door-to-door in the neighborhood. So I know that panhandling is annoying and disruptive, but still, I don't know that this, that an ordinance, which obviously is not prepared yet, to target aggressive panhandling is the answer. One of the things I thought of is, you know, if you're truly panhandling, you truly have no money, and you're asked to pay a $50 fine, well, that's kind of like counterintuitive. I also learned when I Googled "panhandling in municipalities" that these ordinances have been challenged in other cities as a violation of First Amendment rights, and I don't know that we need to open up the city to any more legal challenges. But I wanted to go beyond pragmatic concerns and talk to those around the front lines and dealing with those in need. So I talked to several Benedictine friends, who all use the same term to describe such ordinances, the criminalization of poverty, and it's creeping into our city. The bus stops were moved off State Street so regular folks would be spared the sight of needy riders, and park benches have been removed outside UPMC Park, so homeless people don't sleep there, and so now there's no seating. If you're a baseball fan waiting to go into a game, there's no, there's no benches there anymore. Benches around Gannon have those dividers in the middle, so there's enough room for a homeless person to stretch out. The Fountain of Perry Square is blocked off now for kids who want to cool off. We were told, so this is so that vending trucks can move around more easily for big events like we're on the shore. But one person I talked to let it slip that there have been concerns from a previous promoter about undesirables in the park. I really love that our mayor has a vision to make Erie a truly inclusive, diverse city, and I know we need thriving businesses operating in a safe environment to do so. But we also need to acknowledge that there are root causes for panhandling: poverty, alcoholism, drug addiction, and mental health issues. So before we put the wheels in motion for an ordinance to ban aggressive panhandling, we need to look at some creative solutions being tried in other cities, and we need to put the problem in context. Today, I went and I talked to Bill Grove, I, I didn't know that Wednesday was the good drop-in day for the Mental Health Association. I just happened to go there because we have a city council meeting tonight, so... I just happened to go there because we have a city council meeting tonight, so I dropped in on Bill Grove, who's the executive director. And he told me that he dates the problem to the Tom Corbett administration when cash grants for welfare were eliminated. Before that, he said, "People were eligible for $270 a month." Those are able, supposedly able-bodied adults. Not much, but at least enough to buy some of the things people are begging for money for today. And then he also told me about that program that Diana mentioned, the one in Albuquerque, where the homeless can be picked up every morning to do jobs for the city in exchange for earning. It was $9 an hour. Diana says it's now up to $11 an hour. And I think that in Erie, we could devise an Erie-centric model that works best here. I hope you read Kevin Flower's stories about the safety monitors outside the Upper Room, which helps to reduce panhandling and other safety issues around that area. Chris Taylor, the director of the Upper Room, and I are going to meet on Monday at 10:30, so I can learn more about this program and to see if it could be tried in other parts of Erie where panhandling is prevalent. And I'm sure that any other city council members would be welcome to attend. I'm almost done here. And speaking of Kevin Flowers, one of the best pieces of investigative journalism ever produced in Erie was Kevin's series that he did in 1994 about what it was like to be homeless in Erie. Kevin's editor dropped him off at, I think it was the Public Dock, with, if I'm right about this, a toothbrush and $5. And for a week, Kevin had to fend for himself, relying on the generosity of others. It made a big impact on me because it made me see what it's like to be homeless. We're at a point in this country where we all would do well to step into the shoes of those who are less fortunate and have become homeless. So I would, again, this is not a criticism of Bob's initiative. I think it's something we have to deal with, but I'm not comfortable voting to move forward with an ordinance before we look at some of the underlying issues. And we're on the right track in Erie, and I think we can be creative and come up with some things that would work. So, thank you.
Madam President, just a few words on my end of this. You know, I have spoke with the members of the Police Department, and since we've had the Foot Patrol and the Bike Patrol down here in downtown, it has curbed it to a certain extent. If there are certain issues of this panhandling, like Mr. Mersky said at Tulio Towers or whatever, maybe we can concentrate on that area a little more. But something does need to be done, because we had a very terrible incident in our city that we hope never, never, ever happens again. There is programs already in place. There is food programs, there's housing programs in place. Is there more that can be done? Sure, there probably is. But I think we do have to get something in motion, and a resolution does get it in motion. It isn't an ordinance. It's where you discuss it amongst council people, you discuss it amongst administration. I do plan on asking the police chief. He meets with us periodically. This would be a topic to meet with the police chief on, and the Police Department on how much of it is an issue. But I think we need to get something in place, to get something moving. And it is a good resolution. I am going to vote for it. I do appreciate Ms. Allen's comments, but I think there's something we just don't want to ignore. We got to move forward with something here. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Roll call, Ms. Allen.
No.
Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schoff.
No.
Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. This resolution will adopt 4 to 2. Resolution number 11 by Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mrs. Schoff, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, that the proposed repository sale of property commonly known as 1231 Buffalo Road, identified by the index number 18051.10010215 by the Erie County Tax Claim Bureau to Douglas Marlowe, 1241 Buffalo Road in Erie, PA, and the amount of $250 be hereby approved.
Madam President.
Yes.
I would just like to make a motion to table this until we can get some further information.
Okay.
If I have a second.
I'll second that, Mr. Mersky.
Okay, motion by Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Winarski to table Resolution 11. Ms. Allen, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. And that motion will adopt 6 to 0. Okay, we have a couple of wave rules. First wave rules is a transfer that just came in late from Mr. Mersky. Voting to waive the rules, Ms. Allen, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. By Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the following amounts be, and they are hereby transferred in the Office of City Council from the professional services account to the land bank acquisition account in the amount of $5,000. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes.
This was at the request of the Board of the Erie Land Bank. Mrs. Feeney and Mr. Sandell spoke with Mr. Witherspoon and myself. And they asked for this transfer until the county forms their land bank and they can transfer the money. Right now, the redevelopment authority has been absorbing the cost for them and just through the administration of the program, and they'd like to get paid back. So, and then this would allow them to also begin the acquisition of properties.
All right, roll call. Ms. Allen, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. And this resolution will adopt 6 to 0. The second one, fortunately, another resolution got paper clipped to another one and wasn't noticed until after we put the agenda out. So my apologies on that. It's a repository sale. So voting to waive the rules, Ms. Allen, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. By Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mrs. Schoff, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the proposed repository sale property commonly known as a vacant lot at West 17th and Chestnut, identified by the Erie County Assessment Index number blah, 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 I'm not going to read the whole thing out, by the Erie County Tax Claim Bureau to Timothy Musgrave, 1626 Chestnut Street in Erie, PA, and the amount of $250 be hereby approved. Ms. Allen, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. This resolution will adopt 6 to 0, and that'll take us to committee reports, Madam President.
Kathy.
Good evening. First of all, I want the people out there to know that I would love to have the McBride viaduct saved. I am not going to tie myself to the bridge, however, and say, you know, "Get me." I tried. I'm only one person, and that's it. So, I tried. I want to let everyone know that I love that bridge. I talked to people who want to save it, but I have to move on in my life because what else is there to do? I have an appointment for the Erie County Human Relations Advisory Board, and it's going to be on the Erie City website. My email is kshoff@eripa.us. And anyone who would like to be on the board can send me an email. I think I put August 8. And I will look at all the emails that are out there, and I will have an interview or pick up my appointment that way. That's for the Erie County Human Relations Advisory Board. It is a non-paid position and a non-voting position. It is a volunteer, hard-working job. I was at St. Anne's Neighborhood Watch, and I like to go to neighborhood watches. Again, it's an opportunity to see what's being done in a good way in your neighborhood. You talk to the police officers. People who don't use neighborhood watches, please try and see if there is a neighborhood watch in your neighborhood. There are many out there, and please keep yourself informed. It's a wonderful way to connect and be social with your neighbors. Thank you, Mayor Joe Schember, for going to the AmeriMasala event that Lynn Johnson organized with several people. Thank you, Art and Dave Rocco, for helping him put that on. It was a great afternoon of peace and unity in our own Perry Square. It was absolutely wonderful. All who came and participated had a great time. Liz and I orientated ourselves to the Summer of Hope campaign. We went door-to-door along East Front Street, and I found it to be a wonderful time to talk with the neighbors and get their feedback. I think that the Summer of Hope surveys is a good way to get people to address what they would like to see be done in their neighborhood. I went to the East Side Grassroots Coalition meeting at the JFK Center last week, I think it was. And they plan to have good things happen along the Buffalo Road area there. I'm going to the Water Authority meeting. As far as panhandling, I know it's a problem. I know it's out there. I get asked all the time. And I think the police officers that are on foot and on bicycle in the city proper can perhaps talk to the panhandlers and gently lead them on. It is a mental health issue, and a lot of mental health concerns are out there as well. And we need to address that and, again, help. But I know it is a problem. I have a friend who was mugged a couple of years ago. And, but, the people who have approached me have just talked to me, and when I say no, they'll just walk away and go to the next person. But at the same time, I am not afraid. People who know me, I love Erie. I walk downtown all the time, and it's not going to stop me. Liz and I went to the Planning Commission meeting, and they talked about the HUD homes that are going up along West Second Street. And I think that's a wonderful thing. And the LED issues seem to be continually to be brought up. Today, I had lunch with a friend at Calamari's. And when I left there, there was a fella picking up trash, and he was identifiable. I went up to him, and I started talking to him, and I asked him if he was employed by the city. And he said, "No, but the Erie Downtown Partnership." And his boss was John Bookner. And he said he takes care of the littering concerns in the downtown. And we had a great talk briefly, and he likes his job. So I'm glad that he likes his job, because there are many places out there that need the citizens, need the residents, need the people to be responsible for the trash in their street, sidewalk, wherever. I know there are some special needs people that cannot physically do it, but we really need to step up, because I am walking in neighborhoods where it's a concern. So I just want to say thank you to people who step up, help each other. That's what community is all about. Like Jason said, "Love your neighbor as yourself." We need to be out there for each other. Thank you.
Emma? Thank you, Madam President. Good evening once again, everyone. Did attend both the EMTA and Port Authority meetings within the past month. Naturally, EMTA is still in the negotiations with the school district on the busing issue, which I think they're close to resolve there on how to make it a win-win for both of them. Naturally, the EMTA expansion project on East 14th. I don't know if anybody's been by there lately, but that is moving along quite well. Naturally, the weather helps with that. I want to thank the EMTA and the Port Authority themselves. They got a nice thing going with the free busing for the Eight Great Tuesdays that have started, and whether it be from the intermodal here at the Lower State Street or at 12th and Lincoln Avenue. They've got the buses moving very regularly. They're air-conditioned. It's really a nice ride. I've been on it, on them, and it gets you there. You don't fight with the traffic, and they work well hand-in-hand to make that free event that much more special. What else do I have here? Naturally, with the noise we hear outside a little bit roaring the shore, as it may get loud at times, we got to remember it does bring hundreds of thousands of dollars into our community, and it generates that kind of money. And as for some, it may be a burden a little bit. I ask for your patience. It's a five-day event that really is, at the end of the day, does help enhance and as well as bring some money into our local businesses, our hotels, our restaurants. So please beware of the bikers out there, as the old saying goes, "Please look twice." But thank you for your patience while they're here over the next week. One other item I did have, I want to thank the administration for continuing the Summer of Sound music series on Monday nights at the senior apartment complexes throughout the city. Something that has been going on for a while. They kept it intact this year, and I've been to numerous ones myself. And it doesn't matter who the band is. It just gives these older seniors a purpose to get out, gives them a night out, and they don't have to go far. It's right in their own parking lot, as well as if they want to apartment hop or whatever, week after week after week. So I know I enjoy it, and... So I know I enjoy it, and I'm far from that senior thing, I hope, but anyway, there is one left, I believe, on this coming Monday, July 23rd. It's at St. Mary's East, so please come on out and enjoy it, and once again, appreciate to keep that tradition going. Thank you. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Madam President. Very short, I would like to thank the mayor and his staff for visiting, the kids at Roger Young Park, at the Biddy Basketball Camp, the six-year-olds, two, 12, we had 38. We usually have around 40, so we're very pleased with that. When the mayor showed up, they all shouted in unison to welcome Mayor Schember. He took time to speak with him, tell him what they, what he does, and one of his staff members, Mr. Outlaw, told the kids that he played at that same playground, he attended Burton School, and some, a few other things, and they were very interested in that. And one young man, a six-year-old, decided to show the mayor how to play defense. I think he came up to the mayor's knee, but he was in the right position, and his name was Mohammed. We have kids that have a lot of problems, but this young kid came through. He was very quiet the first day. At the end of five days, he was talking, he was relating the individuals. So our camp is more than just basketball skills. We also deal with life skills. We'd like to thank John F. Kennedy Center. One day it rained, they opened up their gym, they stopped their program to let us come in, and the Housing Authority, they brought about 20 kids, and JFK had balance, and we had about 12 sign-ups. And this is about the fifth year we've done this, and we plan to continue it, and we want to thank the administration for taking time to visit with us. My feeling on the, the, I lost my train of thought. That's age. That's what it is, is age.
Senior.
Yeah, senior moment. But the lady that was attacked at Walgreen is sad. Those type things happen during the day or any time. So I think I'm a very strong proponent of moving forward on the resolution, and I will be voting for it. I want to make it very, very strong. And when you get caught, I just hope you do life, far as I'm concerned, when you attack and cut somebody, or people being fearful in a wheelchair. It shouldn't happen. Thank you, Madam President.
My turn. Okay. I wrote a list of 11 things, but Kathy and I have been doing a lot of stuff together, so I can skip some of them, but I'll get to that in a minute. I've refrained from commenting on the McBride Viaduct, because we are in litigation. However, somebody came up to the podium tonight and said that if we disagreed with the New York Times article, that it makes it look like we are from Hicksville. I will not be insulted. I'm a journalist. I still write. Part of the freedom of the press is to be able to also critique the press. We don't live in Hicksville. I don't want people saying that we are callous and complicit in perpetrating fake news. Now you become part of the same conversation by that man who is leading us in Washington. We don't need that in Erie. I don't live in Hicksville. I'm not part of Hicksville, and don't ever tell me that again. All right. I got that out of my system. I attended the Eagles Nest Summit at the Ambassador on June 21st. It was a really upbeat report from Bishop Brock about the successes in aligning job training with local business partners, but there was also a lot of realistic discussion about the challenges. This is one of the things I've tried to bring to the attention of people advocating for community benefit agreements. There are challenges out there in terms of people, whether they're prepared for the types of jobs that you hope to have created. There was some good news about three people having, I think, gone on to Pittsburgh and gotten their sort of credentials in the laborers' union. So some good things are happening, but you also have to be aware of the challenges that we face, which come back to education. I attended the Erie County Convention Center Erie Events Meeting on June 21st to ask about the conditions at UPMC Park. This ballpark is an asset that has some major maintenance issues. Erie Refocus says we should invest in existing assets, and now there's a dire warning from Alavila, general manager of the Detroit Tigers, about the condition of the infield. It looks like those problems will be addressed, and this is not something we need to wait for state money. There should be a maintenance budget for what's going on at that park. You know, I worked there as an usher, and I'm happy to point out where the cracks are in the, in the cement and where the, the field has been attacked by grubs. I talked to a guy who's the, one of the bigwigs in the minor league system for Detroit, and he says he tried to talk about this, somebody else tried to talk about it, but now that Avila, the general manager, has talked about this, it seems like it's getting attention. On June 28th, Kathy Schoff and I went for a tour of Howard Industries. This came about because I had mentioned at the previous city council meeting that I saw on the Howard Industries website that they do some, they have this really cool invention for pedestrian crossing signs that uses LED lights. The owner of Howard Industries, who lives in the city of Erie, it's in Fairview, but he lives in the city of Erie, watched the meeting on TV, said, "Come on out and see what we're doing." They're having some bureaucratic issues in trying to get this approved as a pilot project through the U.S. Department of Transportation. I suggested that he talk to the Innovation District, and so we're trying to get some communication going there. Anyhow, it was really cool to see what Howard Industries is doing. It was kind of like the state of manufacturing today. Big, cool building where there's a lot of technology involved in, in what they're doing to, to create architectural signs. I attended the Blighted Property Review Committee on July 11th, and Chuck Scalise and I are going to work on some type, some ideas for an FAQ for neighborhood organizations and the public about how the blighted property process works, and then what the status is for properties that are in the blighted pipeline. I toured the Innovation District with Carl Sancek on July 11th. It's very cool, and I learned that there's more smart city initiatives that will be unveiled soon, so I'm kind of taking that on. I'm the liaison to IT at City Hall, so I'm kind of hoping I can be a liaison to the Innovation District to keep my council colleagues in the loop as to what is happening there. Kathy went to the East Side Grassroots Coalition meeting on July 12th. I went to the daytime event where they unveiled the strategic plan. There was somebody there from, I think, State DCAD. There's some great opportunities there to utilize Joyce Savaccio Industrial Park in hopes of creating some jobs for people in the neighborhood there. We did the Summer of Hope canvassing on Monday. On-street parking was a concern about the people on Front Street. One more thing, Sewer Authority. I went to the Sewer Authority on July 17th, and Basil Roncity is going to set up a tour for me and for anybody else on City Council, because coming down the pike, there's going to be some big decisions about bond issues that will need to be approved to do capital improvements there. That's all.
Okay. So a few things to report for my liaison, Erie County Convention Center Authority. Mrs. Allen was at the, the meeting as well, but one of the things that was also discussed in addition to the UPMC Park and the R cap that's been put in for that, and it's one of the top requests from Erie County, is the renovation of the ballpark, and is also that the state release the money to expand and renovate the Warner Theater, to deepen the stage, the theater stage, and put in new dressing rooms and expand. And one of the things that they've done, the state doesn't usually do this, usually the state keeps control of the project, because the Convention Center Authority did such a good job with control when they, you did the Convention Center itself in meeting the goals for minority hires and women and that type of thing, and staying under budget, they are allowing local control of the Warner Theater renovation. And one of the first things that the Convention Center Authority did was hire the architect who did the outside renovation when the bricks fell down, who focuses on historic preservation. And he's out of Chicago, and so he's going to be the lead architect on the project, and so we're looking forward to that. One of the downsides of it is that the Warner Theater will be closed. They haven't, they're in the preliminary stages yet of that renovation, but there will be a period of six to nine months where the Warner Theater is closed for renovation and expansion. They bought the parking lot next to it, and so they're going to be expanding so that they can bring in bigger shows, bigger theater productions, and acts that nowadays with their riders, they require certain amenities in order to perform at a venue, and this will allow for, for bigger acts to come in. When we're looking at some of the events, a thank you to Kathy Schoff for AmeriMasala. I did attend that. It was a really, it was a hot day, but it was a fun day. It was a good event. The same day, I also attended the Flagship Flee, where the organizers reported it was the largest one yet, and I was pleased to hear that Kathy Rosdick, the city planner, is working with the businesses up there, along with our parking, oh gosh, what's her name?
Leanne Parmenter.
Leanne Parmenter, gosh. Mel, I'm not even a senior yet. It's late at night, that's what it is, and I had an extra coffee. Leanne Parmenter for the traffic engineer of dealing with ways to slow traffic so that people actually see the businesses, and to address the parking needs so that it balances between the residents who live there and the store owners. That's a really neat area that, they're calling it Independence Hill. Its historic name is Federal Hill, and it's, it's, there's some really neat shops and boutiques there. If you haven't gone up to Peach Street between 24th and 26th, I encourage you to patronize those businesses. I also attended the anniversary of the Holocaust at Streberencia, I can't even say it, it's the Bosnians, the Bosnian community in Erie, on July 11th in 1995, during the war over in the former Yugoslavia. Over 8,372 Bosnians were murdered in a genocide. It was the largest genocide since the Holocaust, and they remember those people from that event, and it was a very touching and moving event. They do it every year, and I was glad to be a part of that. When you don't remember things like that, and you don't keep them fresh in your mind, those sentiments begin to creep up again in communities and in, in, in the world, where we hate people just based on their race, or their religion, or their nationality. And so we need to always remember, and that's one of the things that they did, and they kept bringing that up with speaker after speaker, to remember what happened so that it doesn't happen again. And I also attended Environment Pennsylvania. They released a report saying that Erie, Pennsylvania has over 70 days a year of unhealthy air, based on ozone levels, and so unhealthy ozone levels, and they wanted to bring awareness to the issue. Now, oftentimes with things like that, it's based on weather, so it's industry that's coming from west of us. When the wind blows, it affects our air as well. And just finally, I wanted to let you know I attended the Black Family Foundation 25th Anniversary. The Black Family Foundation donated $13 million so far to the Erie community since 1993, focusing mostly on minority projects and projects that build community in at-risk areas. One of their major projects is the Inroads Program, which is a minority corporate advancement program for young people with selection, education, and training and performance. Mr. Black hires interns that are minorities from across the United States at his facility, and they get that training, and then hopefully, when they graduate from college, are able to enter the corporate world with some additional experience and mentorship. So that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. A couple of things. The CBAs, I'm definitely for the CBAs. I think as a community, we really need to come together and see how it best, best help our city in Erie and how it will work for us, and I think that's a conversation that we need to bring back up to, to the table. We had a study session a few months ago, but I think we need to bring that back up, because that will help us out a lot here, and I'm all for that. And another thing I wanted to talk about is the panhandling. The reason that I voted yes for the panhandling, I'm against the fine, because the fine isn't the problem. I think it opens up a bigger conversation for what the real issues are. Why, why are the people homeless? And I really think the city of Erie, we need to be working with the Mental Health Association to help with this problem, because this is an ongoing problem. Up there on Broad Street where I live at, every day, and I mean, this is a young man. He can't be no more than about 25 to 27 years old, just standing out there every day by McDonald's begging for money. They stand by the, when you pull in the Walmart, begging for monies. But it's a bigger issue to all of this, and I don't think hitting the people in the pocket, that's not going to be the answer, because they don't have money. That's why they're out there begging for money. We need to get to the root causes and the issues that's causing the homelessness. So I, myself personally, am going to give Diane Ames a call tomorrow and sit down with her and see what we can do as far as the city to help with this issue, and see what we can do to help our people out, so they don't have to be standing out on the street corners begging for money. And with that said, Teresa, do you have anything?
I have a new report.
Okay. Mayor?
Just a couple of things, and I'll be fast, because I'm pretty tired too, to be honest. Roaring the Shore, of course, started today, and I had the, I participated in a couple of their events today. One was called the Fallen Rider Memorial Run, which, it's a local group that raises money to help the families of people that are killed riding their motorcycle. And there's nothing, I think, harder to deal with than the loss of a parent, or child, or brother, sister, or grandchild, and that, this group does great work, and I was happy to be part of that. Also, kicked off Roaring the Shore. I apologize, that's why I was a little late getting here today. I had to do the kickoff on the main stage. Our door-to-door, appreciate Kathy and Liz both helping with that, and anyone that would be interested in volunteering for that, we're going to be doing that through the end of the, of July here. So we welcome, help, we're trying to get to as many doors as possible, having great conversations. Eight Grade Tuesdays on Tuesday, I think Kathy and Liz, I saw you guys there too. That was the biggest one I've ever seen, in terms of the number of people that were there. It was pretty incredible. So that's, that's a pretty neat event, too, that people should try to make an appearance that's free. Police Athletic League starts next week over here at Gannon. I think their hours are about 10 to 3, something like that. Welcome to stop over and see the police working with, I think it's about 60 to 70 young inner-city kids. The Biddy Basketball Camp, Mel Spoonman, was, was wonderful, and I was happy to, to be part of that. Celebrate Erie is coming up. That's our next big event after Roaring the Shore here gets done. That's August 16th, 17th, 18th, and 19th. There's a, actually a nonprofit called Cafe that runs that, and they are a little short on funds now, to be honest, so if any, and there's a, there's a book that sponsors can look at in terms of what comes with different levels of sponsorship, so we're still hoping to raise money here so, so that we can pay for everything that we're planning to do at Celebrate Erie, and the Cafe group would appreciate that. Want more information, please contact us. The Flagship Flee that Bob mentioned is, is a great event. We have actually closed Peach Street for them from 26th to 24th for their event. I went to one a month or so ago, and it's, it's a really neat event, and I encourage all, all the listeners to stop by that. There's two left. One is August 11th, and one is September 8th. Lastly, I wanted to give you just a quick report on the solicitor's office and how things are going. I told you, I, you know, we made the change to Ed on a contract basis from a full-time position. The, the office has actually moved. Last year, it was four full-time attorneys, one part-time. We now have two full-time attorneys and Ed on his contract. We now have two full-time attorneys and Ed on his contract basis. We have a part-time position currently open that we're still not sure if we're going to need to fill it or not. We're going to kind of see how things go. Just to give you a report on the first six months of the year, our goal, remember, with Ed on a contract basis was to keep him below 20 hours a week and he's been averaging about 18.5 hours per week. So he is, you know, under the goal and I think it's going to save us money long-term. I think it's working really well. I'm very pleased with the work Ed and his team are doing for, I think, all of us and I hope City Council is as well. So have a good evening. Thanks very much.
That concludes our City Council meeting.
City Council adjourns at 9:30 PM. Mrs. Arrington, Ms. Allen, Mr. Mursky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mrs.